Second District. My name is Nancy Hafford. I’m the Chair of the Planning Board, and we will start with an introduction of our fellow board members, starting with the farthest on my left.
Kathy Wolfson, District Four Appointee.
Todd Warren, District One Appointee.
Katie Panero, County Executive Appointee.
Derrick Johnson, County Executive Appointee.
Scott Olupka, County Executive Appointee.
Shifik Hanton, County Executive Appointee.
Stephen Heinel, County Executive Appointee.
Mark Heckman, District Two Appointee.
Beverly German, District Five, County Council Appointee.
Emily Brophy, County Executive Appointee.
Peter Arway, District Six Appointee.
Welcome Chairman Izzy Petroka. Folks, listen very carefully. This is extremely important because if we don’t get this information, we want to be sure and be clear on what you’re speaking about. So when you signed up, everyone has two minutes to speak. And I’m sure you signed up in the beginning, out at the table or signed up online. Staff will be recalling people, speakers at three at a time. Please come to the front of the room when you hear your name called. And then take a seat near the podium so that you will be ready to make your presentation. This is very, very important. Please state your name. If you’re with an organization, the issue number that you’re speaking about, and if you are for or against it, it really helps the board. So thank you, your exact position. We ask the audience to refrain from making any comments, positive or negative, when someone’s speaking, or displays of any kind. If you have a group that feels the same way, we just ask that you all stand in support of the speaker. The Planning Board will be utilizing a visual electronic timer for the speakers. This will help the speakers to utilize their two minutes efficiently and ensure we have enough time for all interested parties to be able to address the Planning Board. Everyone that is registered will have an opportunity to speak. The Planning Board reserves the right to further limit repetitive comments and presentations in lieu of or addition to your testimony or written comments may be presented to the planning staff at the table out front, and it’ll be distributed to the Board following the hearing. Following the completion of our seven hearings in February, the Planning Board will review the issues and relevant information and make our recommendations to the County Council. The Planning Board’s schedule is posted on the Department of Planning’s website. The County Council will hold their own public hearings in June and are required by code to vote on the new zoning map before September 16th, 2024. Thank you for your attendance, your cooperation, and your respect. Again, remember, please clearly state your name, organization, issue number, as well as if you are for or against it. Taylor, the first speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have John Hess, followed by Jack Greenberg and Fran Berman.
Hello. I’m John Hess. I’m speaking on issue number 2-007, about development for Suburban Club property, and I’m for it. Thank you for the opportunities.
Can you turn the front mic up a little bit, gentlemen? Try it now, sir.
Okay. Hello, is that better? Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of a project that is very important to Suburban Club and the greater Pikesville community. I’m John Hess, and I’m a member of the Board of Directors of Suburban Club and currently serve as First Vice President. Club would like to sell a small portion of our land to accomplish three things: raise money for very needed capital improvements, to retire debt that has accumulated over many years, we have no, we know of no other way to do this, and provide market rate upscale apartments for seniors in this area. The capital raise is extremely important for the ongoing operations and financial stability of the club. We have wanted to do this for many years, but finally have a local partner with a clear plan and a terrific project. A great-looking multifamily housing building that will bring needed rental housing to the center of Pikesville. We’re requesting a change in zoning to make this project a reality. Without the greater density, the economics of residential development don’t work on this site. Construction prices are up, interest rates are up, and market rental rates, not so much. In addition to the design of this project, we’ll not stress county services and schools. This development will have a huge value on multiple levels: over $50 million estimated to be spent in the, in the community, over 100 estimated jobs to be created during the design, development, construction phase. Many permanent jobs created by the ongoing operations provide needed market rate housing to accommodate and spur on Baltimore County growth. There are virtually no other options for high-end senior apartments in Pikesville. Help Suburban Club continue to operate at a very high level and keep approximately 95% of the property as beautiful green space in the heart of Pikesville. The approval of the zoning and construction of these apartments will help keep the club viable and functioning for many years to come, which leaves 95% of the club’s property as its beautiful green undeveloped golf course for many years to come.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, sir. Everyone, make sure you speak loudly into the mic.
Next up, we have Jack Greenberg, followed by Fran Berman and Ken Fuller.
Good evening. I’m Jack Greenberg. I’m a resident of the Second District for probably the last 60 years, and I’m also treasurer of the Suburban Club. I’m here tonight to ask that you support the rezoning request in CZMP issue 2-007. The club was here four years ago seeking rezoning to facilitate a financial infusion for the club. The club has outstanding debt that requires repayment soon, and we are in a position where it is necessary for us to monetize an unused area of our property. When we made the request four years ago, we did so while we were pursuing development partners, purchasers for the property. We never found a partner during the process, but requested the zoning change due to the quadrennial timing of the CZMP process. We learned that there were far too many questions that we are not able to answer because we are not the ones developing the property. This uncertainty led to our neighbors not being able to support our request because they did not want to agree to a cartel zoning of a portion of our property. We have worked hard since the process four years ago, and we’ve identified a development partner. Our partner is proposing to develop senior apartments on a six-acre site on the corner of Park Heights and Slate Avenues. This development provides an excellent complement to our club, provide a place for existing members to retire, a place for us to attract new members, and a tremendous asset to the community. The developer has created a very attractive building, will provide great amenities for the residents, and will be an asset to the community by filling a very large void in our housing market. In addition, the development will bring additional residents to our community to support the county’s efforts to revitalize the Pikesville Business District and the redevelopment of Pikesville Armory into a community asset. It will also provide a place for our community members that are looking to downsize to stay within our community.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Fran Berman, followed by Ken Fuller and Jonathan Atman.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much for listening to us today. My name is Fran Berman. I am a member of the Colonial Village Neighborhood Improvement Association, and I’ve lived in the neighborhood on Deerfield Road for 27 years. The case number is 2-010, and I am in favor of the rezoning requested. CVNIA, the Colonial Village Neighborhood Association, together with the neighborhoods of Sudbrook Park and Williamsburg Community Association, are requesting that the 1.29 acre lot at the southwest corner of the intersection of Milford Mill Road and Deerfield Road be rezoned as open space. The southeast corner became undeveloped land when the Milford Mill Road was realigned to carry traffic over the CSX trains and the MTA subway lines. The site has remained unused and undeveloped for 36 years. We would like it to remain that way. It is also visually adjacent to the Sudbrook Park Historic Scenic Gateway. The green space is a benefit to each of our communities. It is lightly forested with a weather-dependent stream that serves as a natural and trash filter for water runoff into the Gwens Falls watershed. The Gwens Falls watershed is disproportionately overdeveloped in comparison with the Falls, with the Jones Falls watershed, and under the county’s best practices requires that we provide undeveloped land to support the watershed. As I’m running low on time. We also fall within the community enhancement plan as outlined in the master plan and would like, which requests that existing impervious surfaces be converted to green space. This would allow this to remain so. And additionally, we want to make sure that transportation between the subway and the Reisterstown Development Association remains safe and accessible.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ken Fuller, followed by Jonathan Atman and Yair Shalman.
Good evening. My name is Ken Fuller, and I am speaking in favor of the zoning request 2-007. You’ve already heard from several folks from that same hearing, so I’m going to keep mine very brief. I will not get close to the two minutes. I’m, I’m speaking for both my wife Marilyn and myself as Pikesville residents who in the next few years will be looking for senior-style living. We are both in our mid-70s and want to move to a community that offers two- and three-bedroom floor plans with no steps and little or no maintenance. Currently, there doesn’t seem to be many, if any, choices in the Pikesville area that meet all of our needs. We have heard from several friends that the Suburban Club proposed plan will meet our objectives. The proposed site would be on the corner of Park Heights and Slate Avenue, which we feel would be a very desirable location for us to relocate to. There are many seniors currently living in the Pikesville Owings Mills corridor that would benefit from this project. Marilyn and I fully support the request being made by the Suburban Club for zoning approval. Thank you for allowing me to share at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Forty-three seconds.
Jonathan Atman, followed by Yair Shalman and Alan Lawrence.
Good evening. I am Jonathan Atman. I am speaking in favor of issue number 2008. As longtime Pikesville residents, my development team and I understand the vital need for high-end independent senior living options to meet the demand of the aging population of Pikesville. The proposed redevelopment located at 7501 Park Heights Avenue will offer seniors within the community unprecedented amenities such as a kosher kitchen serving two hot meals a day, a clubhouse featuring a spa and library, landscaping and nature enhancements, and a state-of-the-art fitness center. The proposed project also offers the opportunity to provide quality infrastructure on a corner that has been in disarray for many years. Voluntary community engagement is a strong priority for us. Having already held several meetings with associations and individuals within the community, we remain fully committed to working with residents to design and deliver a win-win project that we can all be proud of. We understand that issues like stormwater management, aesthetics, and traffic are at the top of the minds of the neighbors in this area, and we are committed to working through these issues with them. The time is now to ensure that our seniors have quality living options available. There is no better developer than ourselves with our long history in healthcare and senior living management skills. We believe we can deliver the needs in this community. The proposed redevelopment at the corner of Park Heights and Slate Avenue will supply seniors with a secure housing option and a healthcare safety net. This is not currently available at all in the marketplace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Yair Shalman, followed by Alan Lawrence and Arnold Frumman.
Hi, my name is Yair Shalman, and I’m here to speak against issue 2-010. I want to say that I agree with everything the lady spoke before me about this piece of land. I think this piece of land need to be, adjust, be left just the way it is, green. I think it’s beautiful for our community, and I live in this corner for many, many years, and I don’t see any, I cannot vision any development for this piece of land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Lawrence, followed by Arnold Frumman and Sheldon Kaplis.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I’m Alan Lawrence. I’m speaking against number, issue number 2-008. My name is Alan Lawrence, and I own and reside at the property at 7505 Park Heights Avenue with my wife and my three children. We’ve been living there since 2018. I speak on behalf of my wife Bracha, who couldn’t make it tonight, she’s in Florida, as well as my three kids who are too young to yet have an individual voice or really understand what is going on. My property will adjoin the proposed development tied to issue number 2-008, and I strongly oppose that issue on the basis of its incompatibility with the local aesthetics and its scale, on the basis of the crucial issue and question of stormwater management, and on that I think I speak for myself and all my neighbors in the Dunbarton area, and on the basis of the large amount of additional traffic that this proposal is likely to cause. Thank you for your time and consideration. Good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Arnold Frumman, followed by Sheldon Kaplis and Mikhail Wilmouth Carton.
Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Arnold Frumman. I’m a board member of the Suburban Club, and I’m in favor of issue 2-007. The property in question is on a highly visible corner of Park Heights Avenue and Slate. This area has had no significant apartment development for many, many years. Excuse me. There appears to be a strong critical need for senior housing in the Pikesville Owings Mills area. Preliminary indications point to senior-style apartment housing as an ever-increasing positive trend. Thank you for listening and appreciate any consideration you can give us.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Sheldon Kaplis, followed by Mikhail Wilmouth Carton and Lawrence Carton.
Good evening. I’m Sheldon Kaplis. Thank you for this opportunity. I’m speaking for myself and my wife Jamie, who has the flu. I am supportive of, of the project. I’m a member of Suburban Club as well as a resident of Pikesville. My wife and I could be tenants one day of this new, new opportunity. But what, what strikes me is that it’s going to add very little to county services. There are no children there to overcrowd schools, there’s going to be very little traffic, and it seems to me an opportunity to bring senior housing to the area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Mikhail Wilmouth Carton, followed by Lawrence Carton and Danielle Crone.
I’m Michael Wilmouth Carton. I live at 3004 Old Court Road, and I’m speaking in support of issue 22-14. I’m speaking in support of the request to change zoning for this property to RC2 on 133.58 acres in order to ensure that the farmland now known as Hidden Waters Farm is restricted to agricultural use now and in the future, as requested by Mr. and Mrs. France upon the death of Mrs. France. While much of their will had provisions and requests which have been ignored or overruled, it will be a kindness to our neighborhood to retain this land as agricultural use only and to prevent this land from being turned into yet another housing development in the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lawrence Carton, followed by Danielle, Danielle Crone and Thomas Finerty.
Lawrence, I am Lawrence Carton. I live at 3004 Old Court Road in Pikesville. That’s in District Two. I’m speaking in favor of issue 2-014. I am in support of Councilman Petoka’s zoning request to rezone Hidden Waters Farm from DR1 to RC2. While the Maryland Environmental Trust, the MET, has an easement to maintain this property as a farm, rezoning at the RC2 Rural Conservation Zone will further protect this property from being developed for uses other than as a farm in the future, and it should be, and it should further protect this property from coming another housing development of 133 units under DR1 in the future. Note that only the MET can choose whether or not to enforce its easement. I have no standing, even as a neighbor, to enforce the easement should the MET for any reason not act to do so. Please approve this zoning request to further protect this property and to keep it as a farm. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Danielle Crone, or Danielle Crone, followed by Thomas Finerty, followed by Tom Fecky, Feckety?
Good evening. Thank you for enjoying my conversation here for a moment. As a Pikesville resident for, forever, this, this small-scale property, I’m here to speak in regard to the corner of Slate Avenue and Park Heights Avenue, small residential development, and the small-scale, you’ll pardon me, I have a little problem medically, and I may be a little silly, sound silly, but I’m not a complete idiot, so just bear with me for, for one minute. The small-scale development of luxury senior, over-62 project would be an asset to Pikesville. Also, the corner that we’re talking about at Slate and Park Heights Avenue is right around the corner from a very large project that you, that you permitted to be built on Park Heights and Slate Avenue. This is a small, much smaller, and over-62 units, so it won’t be a problem with our, with our school system, it won’t overburden schools, because it’s an over-62 program. It’d be an anchor for the neighborhood. The, the project is small considering, in comparison of what has gone, played, gone, been approved around the corner. It was just completed. If I could read my own writing, I’d be fine. Lastly, Pikesville needs attractive senior living opportunities. I’ve been living here for a long time. I’d like to be able to remain living here. I, like many, many other people, cannot find that opportunity. In the meantime, we do not stress local schools. Anyway.
Thank you, sir.
You’ve already cut me off, and the music is playing. Thank you kindly.
Next, we have Thomas Finerty, followed by Tom Fecket, Feckety, and David Shapiro.
Hello, I’m Tom Finerty, and my wife Wesley Finerty and I bought the property as 6119 Falls Road, which is issue 2005. It’s a residential, we’re trying to put our antique and interior design store there, which we have had for almost 30 years. We opened our first store in the middle of Roland Park, so we’ve been in small businesses in neighborhoods since we started. And then we moved to the, outside the business area of Hamden and in the neighborhood there. This property came up for sale, and it was one that needed a tremendous amount of work. And it was something that, as an antique dealer and as the president of Greater Greenspring Association, I spent a lot of time preserving properties and keeping neighborhoods as they should, and so we brought this, this property back to the way it was before, kept the house the way it is, to keep the neighborhood in sync with everything else. So the, what we’re going to do there is going to have little impact as far as like parking or moving. We only have a couple people in the store at a time. Our interior design business is mostly out of the, the building. We do products all over the country and even some places outside of the country, so it’s not a lot of traffic there. I think it would be a great fit for the neighborhood. We’ve worked with all the neighbors, we’re working on, on doing whatever they, they would need, we’re working on an agreement with the neighborhood associations and the neighbors as far as if it was something else besides when we decide to leave at some point, that we’re changing zoning, we want to make sure that they’re all protected and that the neighborhood stays the way it is, and we preserve the integrity of the whole neighborhood. I lived a couple doors up, I rented it when I came out of, of college, and I just really enjoy the neighborhood, and I want to support the neighborhood and be a good neighbor. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Taylor?
Next, we have Tom. I’m just going to leave it at that, followed by David Shapiro and Deb Patterson.
Thank you. I’m Tom Fecket. I’m a member of the Board of the Pikesville Communities Corporation, a group of 14 local neighborhoods, and I’m here to speak about two issues. Issue 2-007, PCC recognizes and fully supports Suburban Club’s importance to the community and understand their need to make changes in order to maintain the viability of their operation. However, we do not support the, the issue as it’s currently stated. The proposed RAE1 building is not within 1,000 feet of a CCC district as required by paragraph 200.1. B. Extending a narrow strip of land out to Reisterstown Road in order to circumvent this requirement is unacceptable. Furthermore, this convoluted zoning plan has the undesirable result of extending the CCC district, so there is potential for future commercial activity along Park Heights Avenue. PCC supports Suburban Club’s plan to sell a corner of the property to a developer for active senior apartments, contingent on a zoning change. We have seen the proposed plan and find it to be thoughtful and in step with the community and believe that Suburban Club has a vested interest in the plan pursued as proposed. However, we, we believe and suggest that a PUD is a more appropriate way to achieve this development concept while avoiding negative impact to the neighborhood with regards to future land, land use. Across the street is, is issue 2-008. PCC does not support this zoning request. Similar to the other issue, this building is also not within 1,000 feet of the CCC district, and the property lies within a 2009 designated Dunbarton Historic District. The proposed building is not in line with the neighborhood and even altered.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have David Shapiro, followed by Deb Patterson and Adam Rosenblatt.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Shapiro. I am the former president of the Dunbarton Improvement Association. Today, I’m speaking solely on my own behalf, on behalf of my wife Sarah, who’s here with us today. The two issues I’d like to talk about is 2-008, which is the Slate Mansion on the corner of Park Heights and Slate, and that project is right across the street from the other proposed project you’ve heard about today, which is the 1-2007. That’s at the corner of Slate and Park Heights, which would be the 62 and older apartment complex. Both of them are interesting projects. We’re always interested in seeing new things in our community. We do not believe that the Slate Mansion project is appropriate at this point. We did have a presentation by the developer. 144 units on this parcel, six stories high, we don’t believe would be consistent with what we’d like to see at this neighborhood. The other concerns that you haven’t really heard about that you need to look into would be stormwater runoff, which is a huge problem in our neighborhood. Number two, the traffic coming out of the street today, I live on Barton Oaks Road, the traffic from the main intersection at Park Heights and Slate runs all the way back to Park Heights and, and Slate, rather, the one that parks from the main intersection. That is a huge problem. If this development were to go forward, the entry for both of these projects really should be on Slate Avenue. The parking for the Slate Mansion project is insignificant, is really not adequate. If you have 144 units, those people may have one or two cars, plus the people who are staffing that facility would need to have parking. We don’t believe it works. Councilman Petoka is working on this very well with us. In terms of Suburban Club, the issue about the zoning, we need to look at how it has to go up to the clubhouse and into Reisterstown Road. We believe that’s somewhat problematic, but this is still in progress. Hopefully, our Improvement Association will have a word of our approval at a later date. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
to go up to the clubhouse and into Reisterstown Road. We believe that's somewhat problematic. But this is still in progress. Hopefully, our Improvement Association will have a word of our approval at a later date. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Deb Patterson, followed by Adam Rosenblatt and Susan Pats.
Good evening. I'm Deb Patterson, president of the Pikesville Community Corporation, coalition of 14 neighborhoods, 2,000 households. We do not support the requested BL zoning for issues 3, 4, and 17. These properties are directly adjacent to residential areas. The current office zoning RO and OR allows for transition, as indicated in county code, between the residential neighborhoods and the BL zone properties on Reisterstown Road. BL zoning allows for a wide variety of commercial activities that are incompatible with all residential neighborhoods. Furthermore, there seems to be a rush towards BL zoning in this CZMP. We feel that this is connected to the mixed use by Wrightville, that includes BL and very, very ambiguous nodes. The petitioners in 3 and 4 have suggested that some of the activity in these areas does not comply with RO zoning, and that they are trying to rezone to bring the uses and zoning into line. If indeed the uses are inappropriate, the solution is not to rezone, but to bring the use into compliance with existing zoning. Either the businesses failed to acquire permits, which does happen, or the county issued improper permits. Either way, zoning dictates use, not the other way around. The second issue that we'd like to talk about is 18. This asks for a review of the current zoning for 128 acres in Pikesville. This should not be decided as a CZMP issue. This should be a longer-term evaluation that includes the council, planning department, and the public. Public participation seems to be getting forgotten these days. The Armory will not be fully online for five years. We have time to do this right. That being said, PCC believes that the neighborhoods will undergo inevitable change once the Armory comes online, and that it is critical to proactively mitigate negative consequences of those changes. The first step is to agree that transition between commercial and residential properties in the form of RO and OR zoning should remain in place along Church and Sudbrook Lanes and along Slade Avenue and Milford Mill Road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Adam Rosenblatt, followed by Susan Pats and LaShay Jackson.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Adam Rosenblatt. I'm an attorney with Venable Law Firm, here to speak in favor of issue 2-009. Thank you, members of the board, for your time tonight, and all the county employees that are here, not just for this, but for all of these meetings. We really appreciate your time. The property I'm here to talk about have not heard about tonight. It is an approximately 40-acre piece of property located on the south side of Greenspring Valley Road, just west of its intersection with Stevenson. The owner was born and raised on this property, lives there with his wife and family, and is an avid cyclist. He's installed a number of bike trails and paths on this property that are well-known to people in the cycling community. He also has contracted with a stream restoration program with a local company, and his plan is to permanently protect, repair, and restore a stream that runs east to west through the property and bisects it. The rezoning area is actually below that stream. It'll be separated from the remainder of the property. And what he plans to do is to seek BL zoning on the portion of the property below the stream, which is located just west of Stevenson Village, so there's BL zoning existing to the east and south of the requested rezoning area. A few things, and the reason we wanted to speak tonight is because the rezoning area looks like it's 13 acres in size, it's a long, narrow strip, and we wanted to explain why. There are a lot of environmental conditions on this property that need to be factored in when it is developed, as the owner is seeking to do. And he needs flexibility in design, because he does not know where the permanent ultimate location of the building that he wants to construct will be located. So, rezoning this narrow strip will give him flexibility to work with the environmental conditions, then hopefully, eventually, his plan is to build a small bike shop on the property. That's all he wants to do with this request. We really appreciate your support for that, and we'll submit a letter with additional information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Susan Pats, followed by LaShay Jackson and Bruce Boswell.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My remarks refer to issue 7 and issue 8. My name is Susan Pats. My family has lived adjacent to the Suburban Club for over 95 years. That's a lot of golf balls we have dodged. In brief, we request maintaining the current DR2 zoning of Suburban, or in a best-case scenario, downzoning it to agricultural zoning that reflects its current tax designation that the Suburban Club has utilized for over 120-plus years. In the 2020 CZMP process, my family proposed to downzone the whole entire 130-acre property. We propose this again as a future legacy regional park for our area. So, we'd like you to consider that again. The park would complement the revitalization of Pikesville, add to the anchoring impact of the Armory project, and mitigate environmentally, and actually maintain the environmentally important function of mitigating climate change by retaining the green space of the Country Club, and will promote citizens' health. Though Suburban is not for sale, 130 acres, not yet, it will be in the very foreseeable future. The Country Club has sold property before to offset debt, and they're doing it again, and this time it's three times the acreage they sold prior. We also, as mentioned by previous speakers, the BL, the business designation with the little strip to Reisterstown Road, is quite destructive to the historic neighborhoods of Dunbarton and the surrounding neighborhoods. So, we oppose that.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. We're looking forward to a legacy project from the community.
Thank you.
Next, we have LaShay Jackson, followed by Bruce Boswell and Adina Burston.
Taylor?
Sorry. Bruce, Bruce Boswell, followed by Adina Burston and Ruth Goldstein.
Yes, hello. Good evening. I'm speaking on issue 2005, I mean 2005. This is the house on Falls Road, which has a proposed zoning change to BL. I would like to give this paperwork.
You can hand it to the desk in the front, sir, when you're finished, when you leave.
They didn't tell me that when I was out there. But this is for all of you, 20 copies. I am speaking to the project that the gentleman spoke to earlier regarding the antique shop. I am a former chairman of the Landmarks Commission for Baltimore County, and also a member of the Rockshin Riderwood Community Association. And I'm not speaking on their behalf, just as an individual. I live on Falls Road. I renovated the house next to the subject property. We've been working very hard to preserve the rural character of Falls Road, which is a designated state historic route. And our main concern, the community, my sense of, but the neighbors' desire and myself, is that we work to preserve that rural character. And the idea of commercial establishments on Falls Road encroaching on Bear Hills National Historic District, which this paperwork speaks to, the subject property is a contributing structure in the Bear Hills National Historic District. So, the owner of the property is working with the community to come up with some guidelines. And I'd like to speak to my support for that process. But once the zoning has changed, we'd like to see at least a 30-year, if not 50-year hold on any change to the building, the building itself.
Thank you, sir.
And that's what I'd like to support.
And they have a desk out at the front when you leave, you can drop the papers, and we'll all get them. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Adina Burston, followed by Ruth Goldstein and Carrie Lasner.
Hi, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm new at this. I'm not a new business owner, but I just recently got a property on Church Lane. I am here to speak of the issue 2-004, about the zoning correction. For me, it seems pretty simple. It seems like all of us are running our businesses there, and for some reason, it's still under RO, and it should be BL zoning. So, I'm just asking for us to change it over simply to the BL zoning, because all of us are acting businesses there. Quiet businesses, we all get along. I actually let the church across the street from me use my parking lot when we're not there, and we just have wonderful, easy clients. No one's making any extra noise. I'm a resident myself, right here in Pikesville for the past long time, and I just appreciate if you guys would consider changing it to the BL zoning. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ruth Goldstein, followed by Carrie Lasner and Denise Darden.
Welcome to the beautiful 2nd District. I'm Ruth Goldstein, and I'm going to speak about 07 and 08, and I oppose both issues. I live at Slade, 7 Slade Avenue, directly across the street from Suburban Club and Catty Corner to Slade Mansion. 7 Slade is next door to the intersection of Park Heights and Slade Avenues and overlooks Suburban Club property. As a lifelong Pikesville resident, I've watched traffic here grow from the pace of a country road to daily backups that require several traffic light cycles to pass through the intersections at Park Heights and Slade and Park Heights and Old Court. Between the two proposed developments, plus 100 new modern rental units that are similar in nature and amenities to the ones proposed at Suburban Club, at the New Ingram Manor just south of Slade Avenue, so it's in the city, but it's on the same intersection, there's the potential to pour at least 600 new units into this intersection. Proponents claim we don't need to worry because old people don't drive. In my opinion, this is a bogus argument. Just take a trip to the Pikesville Giant or Trader Joe's, if you don't believe me, and look around this room. Likewise, an assisted living facility, if that's what Slade Mansion is going to be, I haven't learned that yet, has staff and visitors who drive, even if the residents don't. Moreover, the RAE1 status to these, granting it to these properties allows for future development, commercial development on Park Heights Avenue, when clearly the infrastructure does not support it, and it violates the principles of the Pikesville Revitalization Action Plan to concentrate business development in the Reisterstown Road commercial corridor.
Thank you so much.
If you'll allow me, just one more sentence.
Ma'am, if I allow you, I have to allow everybody. I just try to be fair. I'd have to allow everyone.
Okay.
Sorry.
I agree with preserving the green space across the street at Suburban Club. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Carrie Lasner, followed by Denise Darden and Chris Mudd.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Lasner. I'm the vice president of the Greystone Community Association. We represent approximately 450 homes. I'm here for issue 01 and 02. We support the property zoning change from a DR5.5 to a DR16 for 01, with understanding that the current attached side property continues to remain undeveloped green space. The petitioner, Mr. Blevins, not only introduced himself to the community, but has become an active member and has played a highly active role in the revitalization process of Woodlawn Village. He has been a wonderful addition to our community, both in voice and action. On issue 02, we are against this property change of a DR5.5 to a DR16 for commercial use. On November 3, the justification stated that the property was going to be turned into residential to commercial for an assisted living facility. This property is in the middle of a residential block of a very busy street. We believe that in addition to congestion in terms of vehicle traffic as workers and visitors come and go. More importantly, we are concerned that the petitioner simply sees this isn't a business. Neighbors have been, have not been approached by the petitioner about the proposed changes. We, as a community, have seen far too many businesses come in with that mindset. They're not coming to join the community, but simply use its resources. We need businesses to come in as assets, not liabilities. Businesses that come in without the mindset of community partnership often are liabilities that need to be policed, and not as assets for the betterment of our community. We ask that issue 02 does not up to a DR16, but remains a DR5.5. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Denise Darden, followed by Christopher Mudd and Sandy Marrenberg.
Good evening. My name is Denise Darden. I'm the secretary of the Greystone Community Association. My issue is with 2-002, and there is a safety concern concerning this issue. So, I have a few testimonies from our neighbors. Mrs. Kathy Brown states, "I am a resident in the Woodlawn community. I am very much opposed to 1913 Woodlawn Drive becoming an assisted living facility." I live three houses from this resident, and I don't think that it would be safe for patients if they come out into the residence, into the Woodlawn Drive streets. People are always flying up and down this road. I have been nearly hit pulling in and out of my driveway. I'm sure making 1913 Woodlawn Drive a commercial business would be a liability, not an asset to our community. Mrs. Jackie Daly states that I am definitely opposed to this addition to our community, assisted living facilities, and any other commercialization to our neighborhood. Also, the traffic on Woodlawn Drive is already unbearable. Even though there are, there was a sign set in the, on Mrs. Matthews' property, the community is still opposed of this idea. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have Chris Mudd, followed by Sandy Marrenberg and Juanita Reese.
Good evening, members of the board. Chris Mudd with Venable, here speaking on two issues, and I'm here at the request of the applicants who are unable to be here tonight. First is issue 2-006, which, I'm here to ask you to support the request to go from RC2 to BL. This is a piece of property that is on the opposite side of the parking lot from the Valley Inn Restaurant. The property is owned by the owner and operator of Valley Inn. The idea here is to create a modest coffee shop slash sandwich shop type use that would operate on the off-hours of the Valley Inn and enable utilization of the same entrance and parking lot for the Valley Inn. There are environmental constraints on this site, but we believe that it can be developed within an envelope that does not impact those environmental constraints that are there. There's already an ability to build a home on this site, and that is essentially what this operator and owner's vision is, is to have a residential scale, a residential-sized building, a very small operation, and to have a footprint of that size. And we believe that we can work with the community and formulate a covenant agreement for, to have an effective result, to have the property developed in this way. We're already in contact with the Valley's Planning Council, and we continue or plan to continue to do that going forward. I also want to speak briefly on issue 2-007 in support of this request. I'm here on behalf of the developer, Mr. Barry Nabozny. Mr. Nabozny's out of town and was unable to make it. I just, he just wanted you all to know that for the past four years, since this was before the council four years, or the planning board and the council four years ago, he's been working directly with Suburban Club, and now more recently with many neighbors in the area, in an attempt to find a reasonable path forward. And he's committed to continuing to work with both as he moves forward in this process. So, we look forward to your support on both of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next, we have Sandy Marrenberg, followed by Juanita Reese and Ariel Cohen.
Hi, I'm Sandy Marrenberg. I'm here to speak on issue 2010, which is a roughly two-acre site at Milford Mill Road in Deerfield. I am the director of Blue Ocean Realty, and I thank you for allowing me to present what I think is a clear and concise set of reasons why the current MR zoning on this roughly two-acre site should remain zoned MR as it has been since we purchased the property in 2010, when we purchased the adjacent Milford Mill Apartments. We do not want this track down zone to DR3.5 and see open space at our expense. Based on the engineering and environmental studies that we have submitted to the county, the site is buildable for our intended use, and we have offered to en- the site is buildable for our intended use, and we have offered to include an enclosed indoor recreational space in this building dedicated to the community. We've had discussions with the Randalls Town NAACP about programming and managing the community space in our building. Blue Ocean has held at least three formal meetings with the community to build and operate a self-storage building with significant dedicated community space. We have redesigned the building at the community's request to look like a residential building, a small apartment building. It will be two stories above grade. The site is actually a pit. It's 25 feet below grade at the entrance. So three stories of the five-story self-storage building will be below grade and can't be seen, and two stories will be at grade and above. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Juanita Reese, followed by Ariel Cohen and Thomas Baum. Juanita? Ariel Cohen? Thomas Baum? So after Thomas, we'll have Sam Marazati and Susan Williams.
Sir?
Thank you. My name is Thomas Baum. I am the landowner at 3250 Old Court Road in Pikesville, which is the Hidden Waters Farm. I'm speaking on behalf and in support of Application 2-014 for the downzoning of the property from DR 1 to RC2. As the landowner and also as the co-owner of the farm that operates on the property, I'm fully in support of the downzoning. It is my goal for that farm to always remain a farm, and while it is currently under an MET agricultural easement that preserves the requirement that it be in agricultural use, I want to make sure that in future generations, that this farm will always remain agriculture as it was originally intended to by the landowner that put the property in the trust. And so I speak in support of it, and hopefully you agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Sam Marazati, followed by Susan Williams and Yazina Clark.
Sir?
Hey, good evening. My name is Sam Marazati, and I live in the Donbourn area of Pikesville at 3402 Old Court Road. I'm here for Issue 07, in support of it. I feel there's a lot of lacking housing apartments, newer apartments, in the Pikesville area, and I think a lot of people, including a lot of friends, family, that can benefit from this. And so I'm here to support it, and hope you guys do as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Susan Williams, followed by Yazina Clark and Kelly Hag.
Hello, my name is Susan Williams. I'm co-president of the Pine Ridge Association. And just as an aside, because it matters in terms of my testimony, I qualify as a land use expert. I used to be the Chief of Development for Baltimore City for decades. I've implemented a lot of the kinds of projects you're talking about. I'll try and go quickly, because I have a number of issues. 2-007, the Suburban Club, we are very supportive of the project and recommend it be a PUD, kind of a gerrymandering zoning that is proposed. For 2-008, which is 7501 Park Heights Avenue...
Speak closer to the mic.
Yeah, I was getting feedback, so I was worried. That corner, Park Heights and Slade really are geographic boundaries, and that corner is a very bucolic, single-family neighborhood that's historic. There is 2-016, Church Lane. We support Councilman Batoka's effort to keep what is now being implemented as a park in NC category. 2-018 is a study that really relates to the Armory, and I think there should be a study, but not necessarily tied to this procedure. It's our understanding that 2-022 for the Armory is no longer needed. And then the biggest issues for our community are 2-003, which is rezoning of Slade and Milford Mill, and that is got kind of a companion bill, 2-017, which is another property on Slade, and then the Church Lane properties, which are, I believe it's 2-004. I've done a substantial argument for them not meeting change mistake for the land use article in accordance with the comprehensive plans, whether you do the 2010 Master Plan or the 2023 Master Plan. Pikesville Retail District needs to be smaller, not bigger. And I've also put into your files an alternative adding things to OR.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Next up, we have Yazina Clark, followed by Kelly Hag and Robin Howard.
Good evening. My name is Josania Melendez-Clark. I'm a board member of the Pikesville Township. I'm here to vote against Issue 2-004, which requests the rezoning of 8 through 18 Church Lane from residential office RO to business local BL. RO zoning was created to allow for a transition between high-density commercial residential areas, thus preserving the quality of the life and the life of the residential areas. If these properties are rezoned, the transition will disappear. The wide variety of commercial use allowed by BL are inappropriate in a residential neighborhood. Many of the residents within the Pikesville Township, including myself, are concerned about the potential for diminished property value, trash, transient, increased traffic, and personal safety problems. My husband and I made the decision to move into Church Lane with our two young children because of the street and the neighborhood and the quaint and charming appearance. Similarly, many of my neighbors also made the decision to move in because of the same reasons. The recommendation to decline the rezoning request is not a personal issue between the neighborhood and the property owners. Rather, it is a zoning issue with longstanding land use implications. What the current property owners say they will do or not do is not the point. The importance is that the zoning will have longstanding implications for those properties. We also note that the Master Plan 2030 does not call for extending the BL zone down Church Lane. I represent some of our community residents that oppose the changes to the RO zoning on both sides of Church Lane and Sun Brook Lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kelly Hag, followed by Robin Howard and Jason Smith.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Hag, and I reside at 104 Hawthorne Avenue. I'm for zoning change of Pikesville Armory, but against any changes to residential zoning of homes within the boundary of Ricehurst Town Road, Sun Brook Lane, the railroad tracks, and Milford Mill Road. I love my neighborhood. I lived in this community for all my life. I grew up at 105 Hawthorne Avenue, and when I got married, I moved across the street from my childhood home. Rawson has been a place where families and individuals live. People walk in the neighborhood, children play in the yards and ride their bikes around the streets. Neighborhoods look out for each other. People stroll to Ricehurst Town Road to shop. Many people live here because it is convenient to a commercial area. Over the past few years, more group homes and assisted living homes have started to open in the neighborhood. My parents' home was purchased by someone who, at closing, said they were going to put an assisted living facility in, but it has remained vacant for almost a year. It was built in 1894 and is the original farmhouse for the neighborhood. It deserves to have a family or people live in it and not be a business. I'm concerned that the idea of community will cease to exist because the neighborhood will be overwhelmed by businesses. There should be more residential homes than group slash assisted living. When asked about them being businesses, I've been told that they are not. If they are a money-making entity, I assume they are a business. When Dorizzo Lane was developed, our neighborhood was told that the commercial district would not encroach any further into our community. Apparently, group homes are monitored by a different agency than assisted living facilities. So people do not know how many there really are that exist in our neighborhood. By the time we realize how many are there, it will be too late. We will already have so many that the community feeling will cease to exist, and our housing prices could fall. My concern is that when the Pikesville Armory has granted a change in zoning, it will be carried over to the entire Rawson community. The Pikesville Armory will be a great addition to the community and should be granted any change they need, but any changes in zoning should be restricted to that property.
Ma'am, what issue number were you speaking on?
Oh, 2-018.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Robin Howard, followed by Jason Smith and John King.
Good evening. I'm Robin Howard. I reside at 4208 Buckingham Road, and I'm here to speak in favor of Issue 2-013, Paul's Farm rezoning to an open space. I'm representing my family, and I'm a member of the Villanova Community Association. Thirty years ago this week, I moved my family to my home in a snowstorm. And 30 years later, I'm so happy and I'm so content. My kids have had the benefit of the wonderful schools, but for 30 years, I wake up and I look out my window and I see a farm. I'm at Paul's Farm, and it has been a joy and a pleasure. Like, I moved from the city, a very busy section of the city, and I've been in heaven ever since. But the neighborhoods surrounding the farm is still unique. After all these years, the benefits to open space are huge. Open space improves the quality of life, enhances the overall quality of our community. Green spaces best support people's health and well-being of the residents. Green spaces, just like this, are a safe harbor for pollinators, and if you live near or around, anywhere around the farm or in that area, you know the advantage of rainwater absorption to reduce the massive flooding that we have during any rain. It also increases the value of our homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jason Smith, followed by John King and Gail Parker.
Hi, how are you tonight? My name is Jason Smith. I live on Old Valley Road in Stevenson, and I am here to oppose Issue 2-009 in Stevenson Village. We feel that this project is a detriment to the neighborhood. This will develop a field across the street on a well-known corner in Stevenson. This development, or small bike shop and café, will back up to the Jones Falls watershed. We feel that this will set a dangerous precedent for further development along the Jones Falls watershed corridor. We wish for this space to remain green at all times. Also, the local animals that come from behind my house, the deer, the fox, we have red-tailed hawks, we have bald eagles that populate the area, that feed and drink from the Jones Falls for nourishment. This is very important for us to keep it that way. Also, the individual would like to open a café as well. And we do have BL across the street in Stevenson Village that has a café, but that café hardly remains open, and it switches over every three years because it is hard to sustain a café in that area. So why have another café? And just because we have BL across the street does not mean we should disrupt the integrity of the field just to support this individual's pet project. This is nothing more than a hobby project for the individual that wants to develop this. This doesn't add anything to the community, and we feel it's just unwarranted at all times for this development to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have John King, followed by Gail Parker and Mary Matthews. John? Gail Parker? Mary Matthews, followed by Jay Lazar and Albert Watson?
Good evening. My name is Mary Matthews. I have been a resident of 1913 Woodlawn Drive for 35 years, and I am in support of District 2, Issue #2-002. I'm requesting rezoning to DR 16 from DR 5.5. I want to bring a necessary service to the community that is not common to the area right now. My service can be useful to current residents of the area to stay near loved ones who may need assisted living services. I have the space to make parking and a thorough driveway to ensure that significant traffic issues will not be caused by the facility's staff and visitors. And there are two lots in the property a lot of people don't know in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jay Lazar, followed by Albert Watson and Paul Solowatsky.
Hello, my name is Jay Lazar. I'm a board member of Baltimore Youth Cycling and Charm City Cycling. I'm here in support of the rezoning proposal, 2-009, the Berg property rezoning proposal. The owner, born on the property, and his family have shared their property with the Baltimore cycling community, and my family in particular, since 2018. Each year, Adam mows a track on a portion of the property, creating a dedicated location to practice and train as cyclists. This generosity and passion is contributing to significant results nationally for many of our local racers. Their hope with this RZ proposal is to create a bike shop with an indoor cycling studio to enhance these connections and continue to offer the community and its athletes a central location for a variety of our needs. Independent of this proposal, but relevant to the collective vision for their property, is the conservation easement around that Jones Falls within the property to protect the watershed in perpetuity, restore wetlands that have been impacted by past farming, and provide mitigation for the added impervious surface from this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Albert Watson, followed by Paul Solowatsky and Ruth Getz. Albert Watson?
Mr. Watson?
Paul? And after Paul, we'll have Ruth Getz.
Hello, thank you for your time. This is regards to Issue 2-021. My family and I, we own...
Sir, if you'd say that number again, please?
2-021.
2-021, thank you.
My family and I own several properties across the street from Ollie's on Ricehurst Town Road. And when we purchased these properties, they were uninhabitable, no sewer connections with squatters. We rebuilt those properties in the last couple of years, got them rented out. We have a property that's a small commercial space with some parking issues, and we finally found a tenant that is able to rent it, but they're looking to do a small kitchen, commercial kitchen for their food truck. And right now, it's owned OR, and we work with EZ Batoka's office to see if we can get it zoned to, they recommend it SE, which will give us the capability. And we did that during the COVID, so we haven't had any tenants there, and we're trying to get that rented out and make that a more valuable property for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Ruth Getz, followed by Samuel Spurling.
Hi, I'm here about Issue 2-008. I live at 3504 Slade Avenue, which is the backyard of Slade Mansion of 7501 Park Heights. And when I look out my window, I see the beautiful backyard and the beautiful mansion of Slade Mansion. And you want to turn that into a parking lot and increase the traffic on Slade Avenue and Park Heights. As it is, I have traffic from Baltimore Hebrew Congregation, the schools, Pikesville High School, Pikesville Middle School, and Wellwood. And you want to add more traffic from having the senior living and all the traffic involved with people coming and going, you know, food deliveries and ambulances and all types of things like that, and additional senior living across the street at Suburban Club, which will also cause more traffic to the neighborhood, and it changes the whole dynamics of living where I live, and I just see a lot of problems. And also, in addition, there is a creek in the backyard of Slade Mansion, which is right on... right on my backyard, and part of Slade Mansion's property is on my side of the creek, which is a dead area of land where deer and all kinds of animals live there. And they won't be able to use that land either, but the animals really have it. But by turning a parking lot and a tall, high-rise building, which I will be looking at from my home, the water flood problems, because when it rains, there's a ton of water after a rain for like a day, just coming through that creek, and it's destroyed the vegetation, the trees. Like, just today, I have a tree that fell down across the creek that the children at the school at Slade Mansion walk across, and it's clogging up. I've had to call the county to clear the creek because of all the trees coming down. And if there's no vegetation for the water to absorb into, it will destroy the flooding.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Samuel Spurling. Samuel? All right, and we're going to come back to one speaker that we missed, and that was Gail Parker.
Hello, I'm Gail Parker. I'm here to discuss issue 2-007. As a longtime resident of Pikesville for many years and a representative managing agent for the One Slate condominium, the project planned is very interesting, and we understand the dynamics and the need for it. The main concern that we have as a resident and as the residents of One Slate is the impact on the traffic that 240 additional units is going to cause with people having basically two cars per home that it's going to cause for the Slade Avenue corridor that's already heavily impacted daily, daily accidents, and without a traffic light of some sort to control this, it's a huge concern. So that is what I wanted to ask and hope that it would be considered heavily to decide how they're going to handle if this does go through the impact on the traffic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and for your cooperation in attending the second of the 2024 Baltimore County Planning Board CZMP public hearings. We will take your comments and written testimony into consideration. Safe travel home, folks. Thank you again.